Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spelman, Wolfisle?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Mayor Felkens?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion to approve the agenda, but we've got a couple of amendments to make today.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first amendment would be to add an Item D under the City Manager's Report, simply titled "City Manager Evaluation Update," if you appropriate. And the second item would be actually to add a new section titled "Under Resolutions," and it would be adding the item of a resolution permitting the city to discharge a mortgage in a corporation under a new heading, again, which would be entitled "Adoption of Ordinances and Resolutions," and that would be under Item VIB. So, under six.
Okay, could we have that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman, Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. If you do want to come up and speak, if you would please provide your name, and then write down your name and address, we would appreciate that. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 1st.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman, Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries. So, the next item on our agenda is community spotlight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We do have a community spotlight this evening. Mr. Allen is here to give us an update from the Dog Park Committee.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new members. My old parliamentary procedure buddy from Constantine, you know, going way back, and a drummer on the dais here, so, another musician, that's great. So, I'm gonna give a little bit more of a background than I might normally, because just to catch you two individuals up really quickly. So, my name is Bill Allen, as you know, and several years ago, we had the idea to have a, get a dog park, and we formed a group, and the city empowered us to go out and start soliciting funds, and we did that, and went through a site selection, and came up with a site that we think was, has been, actually, very good, and the city has allowed us to use that, and so, we're here today to kind of update you on where we've come, and maybe a little bit about where we're going. All the notes I have, I have, if you'd like them, I can leave them, if there's information on here that you feel like you'd like to have more of, and also, I think you saw the Dog Park rules, Mike put some signs out that we're gonna put. I have those rules written out, too, so if you're extra concerned about how we're gonna operate the park as it gets going, we have that information, too, but, like a good teacher, I don't want you looking at anything while I'm talking, right? That's how that works. So, we've been going for two years, we meet monthly, we meet here. We've had a core of about eight to 12 people that have been working on this project over this last several years. Margot Copley is our secretary, and she's here today, too, to make sure I don't goof up too bad, miss anything. And so, we now have a park that's running. That was our dream, was to have an enclosed park with a double-gated entry, with water available and landscaping, in a location that was convenient to people, both residents and our towners, and we thought we've got that, and we have that now, and so, the park's been operating for maybe two or three months, three or four months, on a relatively informal basis, but it has everything that a park needs to operate. When we initially wanted to go about doing it, we thought that grants would be the way, and we applied for some grants, and we didn't get those, which was kind of a blessing, I think. It forced us to go back, retool the project, take a look at it another time, and we went out and solicited donations. So, the entire park has been built by donations from either city residents or organizations. The City of Cadillac's been incredibly good in offering in-kind services, and of course, like any park, will maintain it, but it was largely done by the residents. I wanted to give some credit to those groups right now, real quickly. The Paul Miller family donated the largest share of that, of the 15,000 that we felt we needed to operate, and they gave us a $5,000 grant, that family did. Cadillac Rotary provided 2,500, and CCI also provided $2,500, which brought us to 10. And then, we had five groups or individuals that donated $1,000 each. Dr. Meyer and the veterinary clinic there, the airport animal clinic, the Advocates for Animals for Wexford County, a group that exists here, Jim and Christie Skira, and Sue and I also put $1,000 in. So, that brought us to 15. Since that time, we've also raised about another 900, so our full coffers, almost 16 grand, okay? So, I think we have a pretty good amount of money to do what we want to do. We've got the fence done, we've got the gates done, we're now working on the signs, and you saw some of the signs. We have a front sign that we want to put in, that we're working on, and some other signage. We have water coming in the spring, that's a spring improvement, more trees, and more benching, seating, maybe some play elements as well, and so, these are things we're hoping to also get done by the spring. And then, when we can do that by midsummer, we'll hope to have a kind of a get-together and get everybody there and take a look at what we've done. We kind of want to wait till we get some things planted and some other things in the ground before we do that. There may be other improvements in the future, possibly, people have talked about other things, but right, for right now, we feel that that's what we want to go with, and if there are other improvements, we'll bring those up as we go. The only other thing I'd say, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, is I do, and this is more of a personal note than representing Deepak, I'll say that right off the bat, I just think it's cool, we've got a green space right there. I think if you ever get in there and you see people parked there using that space, and amongst the heart of our city, the factories out there, I think it's an area where I'd like to see the city continue to support that. I know there are other needs, possibly, but just, it's kind of a cool spot. So, if you have questions, or if there's anything I haven't covered that anybody would like to know, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Also, you really want to thank the city for their support.
Yeah, I don't want, I didn't want to do too much thanking, because once you start doing that, it gets careful, but we gotta thank Mike Coy. We do have to thank Mike. We gotta thank Mike. Mike is, he was in the room when we started this project, and he's been very loyal to it, and has worked professionally with us, and I couldn't imagine, other than your support, his support would have been very difficult to get to this point, so, thank you.
I know that it's still relatively new, the Cadillac has, but do you have any gut feelings on size and use? Do you see, you know, do you see the number of participants going up, going down? Again, it's only been open for a little bit of time, so I understand that.
Somebody asked me that today. I think probably Al would know the best, based on how many poop bags he takes out of there. That's probably the best barometer. Right now, it's not being used officially, so it's hard to tell. I know that when we, this fall, it was embraced quite well, and that we have now, a group of people are Facebooking it, we have, if you want to get on, we have a Facebook page that operates independently from us, and we're also creating a webpage as well, so we'll forward that, so you can kind of keep a little bit of an eye on that. So, I don't know. I know that in the, what I hear a lot from people who come from other places is, one, they like the setting, and, two, they like the size of the park. We have two parks, actually. We have a all-dog park, and then adjacent to it, a small dog park, so if you have a small dog, and you feel that you don't want that dog interacting with larger dogs, you can, you have that available. So, people like that about it, I think that will attract people. But in terms of size, I think we've got as nice a park as any around. I see some that are much, much, much smaller. I don't know if that answers your question. Yeah, we want to monitor that, though, Marcus, because we definitely want to encourage people to use it, and that's why we wanted the website and some of the other things, so when people come from out of town, and we're hearing more about that, a lot of people say, the first thing we do when we get to town, we get settled in, we go to the dog park, meet some people, get some local information, find something out, and so, we're really hoping that will snowball as well. Yeah, thanks.
Marcus, did Lori, I can't remember her last name, it used to be Lori Labarre, did she contact you about doing a connection from the City of Cadillac's page to the dog park page?
I don't believe so, but I thought we may have already done that a while back.
Not sure. I know, we're just, we're just now developing some of that, and so, it could be that we need a little more follow-up, but we'll definitely want to link off the city page.
I think there is a link to your Facebook site off of our page, but I'd have to double-check to see.
Maybe that's what it was. I would have, I don't think I was aware of the website, so I think it was the Facebook page.
That's in development.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Because we want people to know about it, for sure.
I think it's a great idea, what you're doing, and what you pointed out, I think is right. People will come here, they'll say, wow, they got a dog park, they'll bring their dog over there to meet other dog lover people, and they'll learn a lot about Cadillac. I think it's just wonderful. Beyond, beyond the dog, local dog.
Sure, sure, and people are traveling more and more with their animals. I don't know if you noticed it, more and more places are animal-friendly along the expressways that never were. The city is donating two fire hydrants, one for each park, and we'd like to have some fun with that, maybe we'll do a little contest of sorts, and let a elementary school class paint it or something. I mean, we want to, we want to do, we want to do some of that outreach, for sure, and that was one of our ideas.
Thanks.
Good for you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks for doing this.
Anything else? Yeah, it's working great.
Thanks for all the hard work, and if there's anything more you need to do to promote the park, to get the name out there, that we could do to help you.
Yeah, this council's been very supportive. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, that moves us on to the City Manager's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The first item under the report is the 2016 Forestry Reliability Maintenance Work Update by Consumers Energy. This evening, Doug DeYoung and Joe Shanks, both from Consumers, are here. I'm not sure who's starting off, but please welcome.
Good evening, my name is Doug DeYoung, I'm the Public Affairs Area Manager for Wexford County for Consumers Energy. Thank you for having us here this evening. As you, as you know, reliability, improving our systems, and keeping, maintaining our systems are very important for the safety of the residents, as well as the safety of our workers, and providing you reliable power. With me tonight is Joe Shanks, our forester for this region. He can explain the work that's going to be done in the Cadillac area this coming year. I would also like to point out that we recently gave a check to the city for $2,500 for a tree grant, so that goes into being used to plant trees within the city limits, so we are happy to continue that process. We've had several years now where we've been able to provide the city a tree grant, and with that, I'll turn it over to Joe, so he can go through the, really, the maintenance and the reliability work that we're gonna be doing in the city this year. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joe Shanks, I'm a local forester. I think this is the sixth or seventh year I've been in from a council. Marcus asked me to come and give the spiel I normally do, and get it down to five minutes, there was some new faces, it might not quite be five minutes. But, but what we, the reason we do the tree work that we do is for safe, the safety of the public, safety of our employees. Trees are our number-one cause of outages. The Christmas storm, the whole state got hit, and most of it was trees that were falling for off right away, but keeping the trees cleared of our lines also helps protect our equipment, and also allows access to our equipment, so it's shorter restoration time, because our line crews can see the, see where the damage is. What we do is, we do three notifications for property owners. We try not to surprise any property owners. When our tree crews show up, we want all the questions answered on the front end, so we send a planner postcard. They receive this before we get anybody out even marking the trees. It goes to everybody on that circuit that has a billing address. Then we also, when we go out and mark the trees, our planners leave a door card for property owners with the name and phone number of the planner, the person that marked the trees, to answer questions, and for seasonal residents or vacant properties, we also do some research and send a postcard out to wherever their mailing address, whether it's downstate, whether, you know, they're in Florida for the winter, but we do send that postcard out with the name and number to answer any questions, and then before the tree crews start, we send out a circuit letter, has a whole bunch of information, again, the planners, contact, name and number, so we do make three attempts to notify the property owners of what tree work's planned on their property. The marks that you may see around town, everything we mark is with blue paint. An X is a tree that's slated to be removed, a dot is a tree that's slated to be trimmed. You might see a slash on something that's small, anything under four inches, we consider a brush, but anything to be removed is gonna have a slash on it if it's smaller than four inches. And then, we also started a program a couple of years ago, getting hazard trees, and we do mark those trees with As. It started out as an ash tree program with the Emerald Ash Bore, but we have expanded it to get some declining trees that aren't ash. And after all the marking, if the property owner has any questions, again, the planner will revisit the site, we leave the door card if the customer calls and wants to meet, that have their questions answered, we will do a trip back to answer any questions the resident may have. Debris cleanup in maintained areas, yard settings, we do run anything that's under three inches in diameter through a chipper. The wood is left behind, it is the property owner's tree. Typically, with heating costs, the way they have been, the wood disappears, about as fast as it hits the ground, and my crews regularly have to ask people to leave their work site for their safety, because soon it's hitting the ground, they're coming into the work site. The stumps will be flushed on removals, will be flushed as close to the ground as possible, and then we treat them with an approved herbicide to prevent them from re-sprouting, and that would be your hardwood species, your pine species don't stump sprout, so therefore, no need to treat the stumps. In unmaintained areas, a woodlot, we have a couple of different cleanups. If we can get some mechanical equipment, a big brush hog in there, we will use that, but with the work here in the city limits, most of it's backyards, roadside, so we will be chipping up the brush. The area that we're working, the first one we're gonna be doing is the Cadillac Bond Circuit, which is the north side of the lake. It goes all the way up to your water treatment plant, is where the three-phase goes, but it's highlighted on the map, or it's circled on the map. We will be doing 100% from the substation all the way out to the residence meters. We'll be clearing any trees that need to be addressed. But that's the first one. The planner postcard will be mailed out here within the next week, so some of your residents will start getting, getting the postcards. The planning will start here in a couple of weeks, the marking of the trees, the communicating with the residents, and then tree crews, I'll be starting with two tree crews working in the area. I like to have a smaller contingent when we come into town, because of traffic, blocking roads, blocking lanes, it's easier to have two trucks than a big group come in. But the tree work on this project will be starting within the month, but they'll be there for a while with only two tree crews. The next circuit we're gonna do is the Cadillac Central Circuit, which is the line that feeds the hospital. It's over in that neighborhood. There are a lot of lines that run through back lot lines, and there's probably residents that don't even know the lines are there. It's been a while since we addressed the trees, so we will be in that area following the bond, and then the Cadillac Hospital Circuit no longer feeds the hospital, but it feeds down towards Lake McGuire's Resort, and the businesses at the south end, and then also the south shore of Lake Cadillac. And, and we've done a few projects, that map's been on there, I think, about last three years, because we've done some little piece, bits and pieces, but we are doing the entire circuit this year. More information, your residents can go to consumersenergy.com/forestry. Our customer service number, which you'd call for outages, for any questions you may have, is listed, and then you can also go to the arborday.org for more information on trees. With that, I made my five minutes. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Just curious, how often, how often do you have to do a complete circuit like that?
We do our complete circuits based on, we have a formula that we use, based on outage minutes, last time trimmed, we do our worst circuits. We spend statewide in the mid-40 million-dollar range a year. We're trying to get out more regularly, but we are hitting, but with us having 70,000 miles worth of main primary lines, 40, mid-40s isn't quite enough to get on a rotation, but there, we're trying to get it down so we're there more often than we have on many of these circuits. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item under the Manager's Report this evening is an item regarding bids and recommendations for a fire department renovation project. This project is in regard to bathroom renovations. They will be updated, they will be ADA compliant, they'll also provide for separate facilities for women that access the department as well, whether they're through the fire department or through North Flight EMS. It's important that we do this, it'll provide for much closer facilities versus having to have them use other facilities in the, in the building, especially after hours. Bids were received from three companies, all based in Cadillac. The recommendation is for the lowest bidder, which is Randy Williams Construction, that came in at $48,892. We are requesting authorization to move forward with Williams Construction for that amount, plus an additional 10% contingency. And if there are any questions, please feel free to ask. Also, Captain Osborne is here this evening as well.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
And I see that this was budgeted in the budget, so the money's there, so if there are any comments or anything, I'll make a motion to award the contract for the fire department renovations to Randy R. Williams Construction in accordance with their bid, with an additional 10% contingency for pre-approved cost overruns.
Support.
I'm sorry, did we talk about when this was gonna start?
We did not. Do you guys have a start date yet?
I think it's coming right up, because it's required to be done, for us, required to be done by the end of the fiscal year, but I think, I can't remember exactly the date that Scott put in, I think April 30th, so, I think as soon as we give him the go, he's gonna come in and want to get started.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the State of the City update, and I'm going to excuse myself for coming around in the front. Save, no heckling. No, I said no heckling. I am going to do my best to keep this thing moving, and as I say that, I might start moving around myself a little bit, so if I get too, too far away from the mic, please, somebody, anybody, tell me to get back in front of the mic. I tend to talk and walk, so. Okay. So, Mayor, members of the City Council, this evening, I'm preparing, I'm going to be presenting the annual State of the City update for 2015. This is something I've not yet done since my tenure here with this organization, but I'm very proud to present it this evening. So, who are we, and what do we do? We are a very close urban-like city. This is a chart that has been shown in a variety of other presentations in the past. It shows the City of Cadillac, along with our four surrounding municipalities, Cherry Grove, Clam Lake, Herring, and Salma, as it compares our population density to housing densities to the different townships. And so, interestingly enough, as they say, we're a close urban-like city, we have 1,446 people per square mile, along with a housing density of approximately 668 units per square mile, as compared to Herring, as a, for instance, which would be the next highest one, at 98 people per square mile, and 43 units of housing per square mile. And so, you can take, take time on your own, if you will, to kind of go through the chart, but just as that comparison, you can see, it's rather dramatic. We are also the population center. Wexford County has 32,735 residents, 22,380 excluding the city. Cadillac has 10,335 residents, however, the daytime population in Cadillac goes up by 64%. And so, when we think about our city and our organization, and the services that we provide on a day-to-day basis, we are far greater than just a bedroom community. The services that we're providing are to a much greater population, and that's important to really remember as we think about all of the things that we do as an organization. We are the home to thousands of workers. I need to keep up on my own page here, but we have industrial parks alone that employ over 4,000 people, that create approximately a billion dollars annually of products. That's according to the last economic census data that we have, and some of the, some of the main categories of businesses in town include construction sector, the healthcare and social services sector, lodging and food service, manufacturing and industrial, obviously, and retail trade. And we are doing everything we can to try to make Cadillac, our community, an environment for, for these sectors to flourish. So, you know, as I mentioned before, there's, you know, there's a great population that we provide service to, and as this slide shows, sort of an introduction or an overview to city operations, currently, we have 74 full-time positions that are responsible for everything. Public meetings and elections, processing of taxes and receipts, there's $23 million a year of receipts that we process, 44,000 receipts. We maintain nearly 88 miles of streets, 50 miles of water, and 74 miles of sewer mains. We have over 1,900 fire runs. Most of those are EMS runs, emergency medical services, over 1,500 of them. We've investigated, or I should say, we investigate approximately 2,000 crimes annually. We go out on over 1,800 service calls and have made over 844 arrests. Again, 74 people, full-time. And those, those people can be kind of broken down into what I would call the following main service functions, which would be public works and engineering, police services, fire services, water and wastewater services, which we commonly refer to as utilities, financial services, which I would include the treasurer function and our front counter functions, community development, which includes planning and zoning services. In my office, that includes HR and clerk services. Taking a little bit of a deeper dive into our staffing, as I mentioned, we have, as of January 4th, 2016, 74 full-time positions. There are four unions that the city has, plus our non-union group, and you can see in the chart the breakout accordingly. There are 28 non-union employees, four within our police command structure, 10 within our patrol commands, or our patrol union structure, 11 within the firefighters' union, and 21 within public works and utilities. Public works and utilities, while they are separate departments, are all part of the same, the same union. same, the same union organization. This is what I think is a real interesting chart. The, the chart on the left shows the average monthly employee number, which again currently is seventy-four. Our average age is forty-five and a half years old. The average tenure of an employee here is over twelve years, which I think is, is a good number to show people are here and they're staying here. And the number of promotions over the last year has been seven. Looking at our average, excuse me, our average compensation numbers, I think that's sort of interesting as well. It's color-coded, so obviously, look at the, look at the screens or look at your, your handouts. There are twenty-six employees that fall under Act three forty-five, that's the police and fire retirement millage, that's how it's funded through public act three forty-five. There are forty-eight employees that fall under the MERS retirement system. The average annual pay for an employee that would be within act three forty-five is, is just under sixty-three thousand, whereas the average annual pay of a non-union or somebody under MERS, because that would also include the steelworkers, is forty-three thousand. And then the other number is, is also very interesting to note. You, you may hear a lot about how, how strong or how high public sector pension programs are, and I suppose that this number is all very relative, but in looking at the slide, the average annual pension for an act three forty-five, a police or fireman employee is, is just under twenty-two thousand a year, whereas the average pension of the other employees' annual pension is just under thirteen thousand per year. And that's, again, just doing that deeper dive and bringing it, bringing the focus in to Cadillac specifically. A little bit, a little bit more on our employment statistics, breakout, as you can see, between gender, as well as between union and non-union. Also, stats with respect to our, our turnover rates overall, we're tracking at about five point four percent. We've had essentially a split between retirement and, and folks that have also resigned, and as you can see, there's been two folks that have retired, along with two positions that have resigned over the last year. Our community development director is, for instance, retired, whereas we had a firefighter resign, and you can see it clearly on, on the chart. If there's any questions, by the way, please feel free to, to jump in. And so now I'm gonna kinda focus in on our various service functions. First one, and this is just alphabetical, is our community development department. Over the last year, they focused really heavily on getting through the master plan. There were a variety of updates that went through the master plan, as I believe everybody understands and knows, is the main planning document that identifies land use. One of the key changes in the graphic there does show that the entire city now includes the new Terry D. property that, that annexed into the site. It's gonna be more commonly known, I believe, as Cadillac Junction, once the construction of, of a development starts to occur on that site. Another major project that's been going through, through community development as well includes our place plans project, Cadillac Heritage Plaza. I am gonna be spending a little more time talking about this project and some of the other projects at the end of this report, but without, without dwelling on it too much, you'll see some of the key features, which include, you know, a plaza area with improved parking, some new amenities such as a splash pad, ice rink, fire pit, farmer's market. These concepts went through a very dynamic and robust public process with the leadership from Michigan State University, Michigan State University Extension, MISTDA, the MML. Wouldn't be possible without a Kickstarter grant from the MEDC. Local firms were hired for the design and for putting the construction drawings together, and we are doing everything we possibly can to get this construction started this spring, and hopefully finished this spring or this summer. Continuing on, as you'll see, the image did change, that's the image of the, the latest farmer's market concept drawing. Still talking about the same project, couple of key points I wanted to mention. One, the Shea locomotive is not moving, nor is the Memorial Fountain, and nor is Lake Street closing. Those are some, some items that I've heard in the past and some questions about whether those are gonna be affected or impacted, and at this moment, they are not, nor are their plans for that, for them to, to be impacted. Additionally, with respect to parking, there will be a loss of parking in the main parking area. Approximately thirty percent of the parking will be eliminated, however, as a part of the overall design, there'll be additional on-street parking on Harris Street and Cass Street. There will also be additional parking created when the farmer's market part of the, of the, of the project moves forward through the raising of the building that's currently on the site, and approximately thirty percent of new parking will be created. And so it will be as close to awash as, as possible with respect to parking loss and parking gain. And as I mentioned earlier, this has gone through a, a public process with collaboration through, through obviously this board, but also through our downtown development authority, certainly, and other local agencies. Community development has also been working and has adopted the, the new five-year recreation plan. This is a plan that's in collaboration with the Cadillac Area Public Schools. Their Board of Education also adopted it. It has been submitted to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for their review, and this is something that is necessary because it does make the city eligible for additional outside funding opportunities. Another project that I, I believe this board is, is very familiar with is the smoking restrictions in public park areas. Just as a quick refresher, the city worked very closely with the District Health Department, District Number Ten, in the preparation of the new regulations, and we followed their model resolution that essentially, as you all know, restricted smoking in many of our public, public lands. This was approved by a resolution back in August, and as stated here, the new policy does support tobacco-free norm, which is now certainly the norm that's out there, and we're hoping that it will improve general health conditions in, in all of our parks by removing that element from them. Some of the future projects that we're working on through community development, you may or may not have heard of some of them. We've been working on developing a new wayfinding system, a new signage system. This may also encompass the greater Cadillac area. The city has been collaborating with the local Chamber of Commerce to help us with this project. We're also gonna start focusing on preparing a new banner-type program specifically for our core DDA district area, which would be in the core downtown area. We're also starting to look at a new streetscape design, again, for the core DDA district, and these are, these are projects and objectives and things that we've, that we have talked about over the course of several years, and now we're starting to begin to focus in on them more distinctly. We are initiating a Mitchell Street Tree Replacement Program for the DDA district. Over the summer, we had a forestry expert come in, essentially walk our entire downtown, provide an analysis of our trees, and, and we really gleaned some great information on some of the things that we need to start looking at in order to have stronger trees that are more resilient to our various weather conditions and seasons that we have here. And so as we, as we go about looking at perhaps redoing a streetscape, some of those things that we've learned are gonna need to be, need to be a part of that project. Also, we're starting to look at preparing the, sort of a sub-area plan for Cadillac West. The image, while perhaps somewhat small, highlights the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority area. And so you can certainly get a, a larger copy or blow it up. This, by the way, will, this whole slideshow will be available online or on our website as well. The other main item that development is looking at is beginning to draft a new zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance, I suppose, depending upon what your own personal philosophies might be, is somewhat antiquated, and through John Wallace, our community development director's leadership, we're gonna be looking at redoing the zoning code and making it more contemporary for our needs today. Some of the things that we are already working on and are somewhat nearing completion, or rather, I should say, at least for the first one nearing completion, is submitting our application to become a complete redevelopment-ready community. This goes to the MEDC. Again, this will hopefully open up additional doors to the city to become eligible for other grants or, or micro grants, especially for project implementation of, of certain things. We're also looking at, at new ways of trying to create and promote new housing, mixed-use development ideas, and redevelopment projects within, within our downtown core. That all, as you can see, all of this sort of goes hand-in-hand. It all will overlap and, and touch upon one another, especially through, you know, redoing our zoning code. We can make new policies that will perhaps create a better environment for new projects to grow and to flourish in. And I think it goes without saying, but we're continually looking for opportunities and to apply for new grants and new projects. As the example is shown in the, in the slide, with respect to the Sound Garden, the White Pine Downtown Trailhead is just a couple of recent examples where we're looking for some outside funding to help us improve, improve and move those projects forward. Moving on to Department of Public Works and Engineering. This first slide shows an example of a couple of the, the street projects that we completed. Lake Street is a quarter-mile of reconstruction, funded by public act fifty-one dollars and through the city's major street fund. I think we, we really have a great project that ended, excuse me, a great project that we ended up with. It includes the bike lane, as we can see. The Seventh Street Project is a very unique project from the standpoint that our local area industry came up with the matching funds to make this project work. This project was paid for through Michigan Department of Transportation Enhancement Grant. It got sparked because one of our area industries went forward with an expansion of their business, and when they did that, MEDC said, hey, you're gonna be eligible possibly for an MDOT transportation grant. They then contacted me, to which we were able to put together a collaborative approach where they came up with the matching grant and got a whole new road as a part of it, which is, which is really great. It really, I think, shows and is a testament to how, how well our industries work with the city. They're dedicated to being here, and we're certainly dedicated to having them here, and it was just a great collaborative partnership. Our street crew, I wanted to have a couple of pictures of our, of our trucks, snow plowing and hauling. Obviously, we're in the midst of, of that operation likely as we speak. We have five plow trucks that cover sixty-three miles of city streets plus twenty-five lane miles of MDOT roads. Those would be US one thirty-one and M fifty-five. Our trucks are in need of, of being updated and replaced. The average age is twelve years old, and for the type of work and duty that, that these specific pieces of equipment are responsible for, that's, that's a number of years that are on them. The other picture is of our new loader. As council mayor may not remember, we leased one in two thousand fifteen. We were able to get a model with a bigger engine and more torque to be able to do a little more creative things with snow piles, especially in the downtown area. We were able to do that, go with the, the better model, if you will, because we, we went forward with the lease versus a traditional buy. It is a five-year term, and at the end of the term, we'll have an option of potentially acquiring it or looking at leasing a new unit, just, just as well, so. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the unit on the left, which is our street patching unit, was destroyed when it was hit as a part of a traffic accident. We acted rather swiftly, actually on an emergency basis, because at the time, we were in the, in the heat of the season of street patching, and now we didn't have any equipment, and so we went out and acquired a new patch trailer, and I thought it would be important that we show, we show that piece of equipment, because it is fully operational and makes all the difference when, when out there trying to, trying to patch all the holes that we get. We certainly wish we could replace all the streets, but that, that just isn't realistic in this day. Forestry, a couple of snapshots of their activities. They have removed over thirty trees, planted sixty. We still have stumps that are getting removed. We go out for bid, we use the low-bid contractor for stump removal. There's also fifty trees that are still on the list to be removed. And so as you heard earlier about some of the, some of the markings, Consumers does, from time to time, remove some trees on our behalf as well, which is a great partnership with, with that agency. Moving on to the fire department. Total runs, as earlier reported, nineteen twenty-one. As you can see, a lot of those calls were from EMS. There were thirty-eight fire calls, fifty-eight hazardous conditions, a hundred and fifty service calls, forty-seven false alarms, and nearly a hundred good intent calls. The picture is a little bit dated, but it is good to see the folks in action. The next slide does a little bit of a deeper dive into some of their stats, and I think it's really great to show, you know, we have a full-time, fully, full-time, fully operational professional fire department that essentially has saved over two million dollars of potential losses. As you can see in that statistic, a save percentage of ninety-eight point two-three percent has been estimated, with fire losses at, at just, just over thirty-seven thousand dollars. And so that's, that's a real important number, I think, to show. Also, you know, we're trying to, to, to keep our fire department employees up to date as best as we can. It's an average of a little over nine hours of training per month for firefighter. One of the other things that's very important to the department and to the city is the amount of time that we spend in public relations, and this stat includes the attendees to the, to the safety expo. But as you can see, you know, over the course of the year, over a hundred and forty hours have been spent. There's been twenty-one public education programs with nearly three thousand participants, most of those being children, which I, which I think is good. Over seven hundred and seventy adults. Another little snapshot on some of the statistics. Very happy to say we haven't had any fatalities or injuries due to fire. Fire department did participate in a full-scale dirty bomb exercise last summer, which was very interesting. I know, mayor, you were part of that exercise in, in your role. There was the Fourteenth Annual Child Safety Expo, where again, there's over five hundred attendees, which was a great, a great success. The department has gone out and presented to all of the public and private schools. As we just approved, we're remodeling, actually, I shouldn't say as we just approved, the remodeling of the office and lounge area has already occurred, where they now have better training space as a result of that. But what we did just approve is the bathroom remodeling, and as I mentioned, it'll be ADA compliant and provide an in-house facility for women in the department. Additionally, we're, we're nearing the end of an officer training program, which has been a, a three-year process utilizing state training funds. Within the Fire Marshal Division, that's really taken off, especially since we have gotten back the responsibilities of doing building inspections, but there's been sixty-three commercial inspections over the last year. Nearly a hundred and ninety violations have been, have been cited, which is an average of, we had an average of four in two thousand fourteen per, per business, and now it's down to three. And so I, I think that's important to state because it's showing that the, the interaction that our fire marshal is having, Anthony Wolfe, is showing improvement. It's showing that, that the system is working. We've recently adopted, and again, council would, would be aware of this, the latest additions of, of the various international property code and fire codes as a part of that. Again, the marshal's office helped to develop a new process- Again, the Marshal's Office helped to develop a new process that connects in with our building inspection program, specifically one where we've created some flexibility for emergency escape openings, which was a very important issue to the Rental Housing Association. We were able to essentially come up with a collaborative approach to addressing that issue, which I think was well received. And our Marshal is now also a registered fire protection system inspector, a fire protection plan reviewer, and is certified under NFPA as a specialist. And he's one of 31 statewide that has those credentials, which is something that's very good for our community. Need a quick sip of water here. This next chart gives you a snapshot of our building code enforcement. We've had 134 permits issued since we started back in July of 2015. The average cost is $159, and that's generated $21,304 in total fees. You can see the breakout between building additions, permits, demolitions, electrical maintenance, and plumbing. And the average costs do vary somewhat significantly between those different divisions. Some of the additional things that the Department is working on, they're working certainly to try to find ways that we can try to improve our ISO rating. And so it's a rather laborious review process, but that is something that they're looking at. They need to document all of their training, look to make sure that we have all the reference materials that ISO requires. And that also includes, you know, trying to work with our own internal communications and communications with Central Dispatch as a way to try to improve that ISO score. With a higher ISO score, or excuse me, with a better ISO score and a lower rating, that could in turn result in lower insurance ratings for home and property insurance. So we're also always looking at enhancing employee development training and continuing to work on our standard operating procedures, along with what I think is a real interesting project, developing a box alarm system, a formal box alarm system for the area. And so that would require collaboration and cooperation from area municipalities and fire departments. The Police Department. This chart shows crimes investigated, service calls reported, and arrests that were made. Total crimes investigated over the period of time from 2005 to 2015. Currently, in 2015, as you can see, it's down to 2,123, and that equals all criminal activity that's been reported and investigated, including unfounded incidents. Service calls reported came in this past year at 1,861, and that includes all reported activity conducted by Cadillac Police Department personnel that is not criminal, includes suspicious situations, accident investigations, and assistance that was rendered. The arrests are down. They were previously at 1097, now they're down to 844, and that totaled charges levied against persons from crimes investigated. There could be a variety of factors as to why arrests are down. I would love to say it's all because the community has improved, generally speaking. That certainly could be a good reason why. But we've also had fluctuations with personnel as well. Number of officers out on the road has gone up and down over the course of the year due to everything from vacation to injuries to just building our force back up. And so I think there's a variety of factors that equal that number, but it's still a good number to see. This next chart is referred to as Microdata, which stands for Michigan Incident Crime Reporting. This is the latest data that we have. As you can see, it only goes to 2014. We're not expecting to see the 2015 data until sometime much later in the year. These are categories that are defined by the FBI and Michigan State Police. As you can see, the chart breaks out violent crime by murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Over the three-year period being reported in the chart, the numbers do show that they're going down. Likewise, under property crime, which again is broken out by burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft, again, the trend shows that it's going down. And currently, the violent crimes per 1,000 statistic is at 5.6, and the property crimes per 1,000 is at 32.9. One of the largest and newest programs that we're championing, that Chief Gornick is championing in the Department of the City, certainly is our Crime Prevention and Community Policing Program. This is the new signage that's developed that you can see in this slide. I'll go back if you didn't see it. This new partnership is part of the new Crime Prevention and Community Policing Initiative. Essentially, it consists of four major areas: neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and rental One of the things we'll mention earlier is, or excuse me, a little bit later, is prevention by environmental design. But when it comes to neighborhoods, you can see in the list there, there are a whole host of things that we're hoping to achieve through this partnership. Everything from neighborhood watch programs to ride-along programs to looking at ways of facilitating cleanup days, blight elimination, potentially the creation of a citizens' police academy, and other community policing practices such as identifying problems and trying to create, you know, new solutions for them. The partnership also certainly includes a close collaboration with our school system. We have a school resource officer currently in the schools. As you can see listed, teaching, educating, and mentoring. It's incredibly important that we start the process of teaching and educating while our children are still young, helping to enforce a strong foundation of understanding with our young folks about the importance of community. And I think it will go a long way over time to curbing some of the deviant behavior that we still have. Looking at a junior police program, truancy programs. Already in place is the OK2SA program, where it's an anonymous digital reporting program that anybody can use. They can call in, they can text. And also, something that would be certainly nice to have, which would be highly visible patrols and an officer available in every school, which eventually might be something that we're able to do. Going back to one of the theories that I mentioned, environmental design. As you can see here, under Businesses/SEP-TED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, we recently went through and did some improvement along the Clem River Greenway adjacent to some of the industries off of Haynes Street. While we didn't actually design a building, which is more or less what this is talking about, where you're going through and creating certain lighting standards, video surveillance standards, landscaping plans, hardscaping plans, to really create a better chance that you're not going to have crime taking place along that site. By the removal of some of the brush and tree cover that was in that area, we opened up the Clem River Greenway and made that entire quadrant a safer location, just adjacent to the high school, the National Guard Armory, AAR, and the industry that's just next door to it. Name escapes me right at the moment. But also looking at enhancing communications through listservs and other methods is another example of what this program hopes to achieve. And again, this is just a sample of various strategies that could possibly be implemented. Rental housing is another key area to the program. We need to make sure that we're educating our property managers and our landlords. They need to understand what the benefits are. We need to partner with these property managers, especially of our various multifamily housing units. They need to understand that we're here, that we want to help them, and that we're not, you know, we're not the enemy. We're looking at whether or not we can create a crime-free leasing addendum. This is something that is already out there in the state, where it's an addendum that would go on leases. Again, this would require the assistance of the property managers and leases that, depending upon what potential violation or felony is occurring, that may have a negative impact on their ability of staying within the subsidized housing. So obviously, we need to go through a full legal review before we were to implement it, but it's something that we've been talking about as a possibility to help our area and to help better our community. Again, looking at maybe establishing listservs or other digital methods and identifying problems and coming up with creative solutions. All about what this partnership could potentially do for us. As I continue to move on, and I'm almost done, Utility Department. Well, we haven't had a citywide run water yet, and I'm hoping that with the forecasted nearly 50-degree weather on Friday, that may help postpone having to have another citywide run water program in place. However, as you can see, the top-left photo is of a frozen sewer manhole, whereas the top-right shows water frozen in the water main. If you can see it, it's kind of dirty and brown-colored, but that's actually a broken water main pipe that's been cut, and it's filled with frozen ice. In the bottom-left, it's a chunk of ice that our employee, I believe it's Eric Varanish, is holding. They came out of a frozen main, and the bottom-right shows essentially a project that we had to do in the middle of the winter to, excuse me, actually, it was just after winter, to replace the main. Manhole rehabilitation is something that we're really trying to continue with. Costs about $2,500 per manhole. You could see the before and after pictures and how it really does make a difference, and it extends the life as we improve the structural integrity of that infrastructure by rehabilitating them. The Department is also working on the SAW grant that we received. This is something that perhaps is not really publicized that often, but the city received a $2 million zero-match requirement grant for doing a stormwater asset management and wastewater project. Needs to be completed by fall of 2017. We have already cleaned and televised about 100,000 feet of sewer main as part of the 2015 project. This will result in sewer rate study and the development of an asset management plan. You know, sort of the good and the bad of this is that, you know, the grant is paying for all this work. One of the things we're going to get at the end, though, is going to be an analysis that's going to say, okay, city, you know, here's where your rates are, and here's where they may need to be, based upon what the, you know, what the analysis or what the plan is saying you're going to have to do to make sure that your capital infrastructure is being maintained and being kept up for the future. So that was something that our community, along with every other community that's accepted these grant dollars, is going to have to deal with once the results are provided. One of the other things that we've done over the last year has been meter changeouts. We have radio reading meters, so we no longer need to essentially walk up to it. There's been 434 MXU changeouts and 164 meter changeouts. You can see the white unit is the MXU or the radio read unit. Within our laboratory, we've tested 7,000 samples. We brought in nearly $100,000 in revenue, and the picture there shows our laboratory supervisor, Amy Vale, working nearly one of 35,000 tests that she's performed in the And obviously, this is perhaps one of the largest public improvement projects that we're doing. The wellfield relocation of Phase 2. It's the final phase of this project. We're looking to install approximately four new wells. As you know, we already have one new site up and running. This would be the second. Either at this site or at the other site, we would be looking at constructing new facilities, new garage facilities, and new operational facilities, and the old wells would be abandoned. The Financial Services Department or the Finance Department. Just a quick slide showing our very stable bond rating, a AA-. Strengths include very strong budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, very strong debt and contingent liability profile, strong management with good financial policies and practices, strong institutional framework score, adequate budgetary performance. And the weaknesses unfortunately show a very weak economy. That's referring to the local economy. We have been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award 31 years in a row and have received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting 30 years in a row, which are incredible things to be able to champion. General Fund Reserves. As the City Council recently was briefed by our auditor, we have 29.06% of fund balance in reserve. If you carve out the non-spendable and restricted line items, as shown below, that brings the number down to almost 27%, a little over 26.6%, which is the number that was reported during the audit report. It's a very good, strong fund balance. Our unfunded liabilities number shows, this is with respect to our pension plan, our Act 345, which is the police and fire retirements, funded at 78%. Our MERS retirement, which covers our non-union and our steel workers, which include Public Works employees and utilities employees, is at 87%. And our other post-employment retirement benefits are at 57%. And important to note that 57%, and again, this was also acknowledged by our auditor, funding is well ahead of the majority of communities that also measured these liabilities over the last few years. And so I'm proud to announce that we're in a strong position there. As I mentioned earlier, I wanted to spend just a little bit more time talking about some of our exciting projects and the exciting future that we have before us. Cadillac Heritage Plaza and Farmer's Market Projects. The slide shows the two concept plans. This is just an incredible public improvement project that we're embarking on. Would not be possible if not for collaboration from local agencies, including obviously our City Council and our Downtown Development Authority. You know, we are essentially going to be taking the sort of back area of the core downtown area where the parking lot is and the area across the street and completely flipping it upside down and reimagining what this space can be used for. We're creating a people space, a public gathering space, a place where not only, obviously, would you perhaps go to park your car, but a place where you're going to want to go to, if nothing more than maybe just to enjoy the environment. You know, whether you end up shopping along Main Street, or you're sitting at a bench watching kids skate, or enjoying the splash pad, or staying warm by a fire on a nice fall day, this is going to really create a new place in Cadillac for people to come and enjoy. The Farmer's Market space across the street is going to also create a wonderful new amenity. This is going to be a place where people can go to enjoy not just a Farmer's Market, but also special events and activities that, once this is constructed, will potentially be occurring in that spot. I can envision that this might be a location where the Craft Beer Fest might want to have some booths or some activities there, where the Maine and Michigan Market may also look using, where other events that perhaps we haven't even heard of yet. using, where other events that perhaps we haven't even heard of yet might look using that space. It's going to, I think, change how special events in that downtown core are going to be held, and all for the better. Cadillac Junction, which is a new private development with, again, as much excitement and vigor, you know, this is probably the largest private commercial development that the city has seen in quite a number of years, and may see for quite a number of years. The image there is just simply a rendering of the proposed Cadillac Junction Development Project. Please understand that is not exactly what it's going to end up looking like. Needs to go through the Planning Commission first and the City Council before we actually know what it will eventually look like. But again, it's a great project that's going on, that staff is working on. The Cadillac Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion Project. Just a fantastic project. It's happening just across the street from where the Plaza Project is. This would not be possible if not for the funding from the Cadillac Rotary Club. They've basically split the project with the city 50/50. There's going to be a tremendous number of improvements that are going to be done, not just will the pavilion be changing, but all of the seating in the area around it will be changing. It'll be able to accommodate people by having dressing rooms and additional storage space at the pavilion itself. Electric's going to be replaced, the audiovisual's going to be updated, and the seating is going to be done in a manner in which we're going to be removing as many sight-distance-type impediments as possible. As you can see, even in that rendering, it shows the relocation of the flags and the memorials accordingly, so that they're no longer positioned in the center. The White Pine Trailhead Project, extending the White Pine Trail into the sort of downtown core, as you can see identified by the yellow highlight, is a project that we absolutely are looking forward to getting started. It is an expensive project, estimated at approximately $400,000. We will need to identify some funding sources, and certainly, the faster that we'll be able to pay back the debt that we'll be taking out to help us with our Plaza Projects, the faster we'll be able to get into this project. We are, that being said, we're certainly looking at DNR grants that might be available, and I believe deadlines are coming up this spring. And so, you know, we'll need to see what they are and how much they are. But the idea is to create a new landing spot for folks coming off the White Pine Trail, where they can lock up their bikes, store their backpacks, get a, you know, see a map, see some signage, know where they are, know that they've now landed in Cadillac. And likewise, for people that are going to access the trail from there, get some information about the trail before they begin, you know, begin their journey. But the hope is that people will come in, have a place to stop, cool off, you know, grab a drink of water, and then explore our downtown and explore Cadillac, because there are other trails and pathways in our area that perhaps people aren't even aware of. But once they land at that trailhead spot, they'll become aware of and maybe wish to continue going. The Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Association put another plug in. We're still looking for volunteers for that body, for that board. This is a blow-up of the image that was earlier in the report. You know, this will create essentially another TIF district that could have the ability of making some neat improvements to that jurisdiction or to that area in which the district covers. It's on the west side of town. It's all within the city of Cadillac limits. There are some areas where some of the township borders will come in. We obviously cannot control or have authority over those areas as well. But the Improvement Association would operate very similar to your Downtown Development Authority, where they would look at what's needed, ways to improve it, and utilize a TIF to help fund some of those improvements. Last, but certainly not least, and one of the most recent developments, is the potential sale of nearly 21 acres of industrial property in our Paffin Industrial Park. Should this sale go through, we're looking at the development of approximately 150,000 square-foot distribution-type facility. This would be, I think, an incredible plus for the city and for the community, and we'll all have to stay tuned as to how this progresses. I know that I went through an awful lot of information and slides rather quickly, but certainly, if there are questions that the board may have, feel free to ask me. If you have questions that you would like to email me or call me on, please feel free to do that as well, and this slideshow will be available online, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First.
Well done. Thank you, Mike.
Good reports. Thank you. And I would be remiss if I did not thank my staff. This report would not have been possible if not for the folks sitting right here. They, well, thank you both, yes. They spent a lot of time gathering all of this information together and piecing it together. And so, honest to goodness, if it wasn't for you folks, I would not be standing here. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, staff.
Good job.
Yes, absolutely, yay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Let's see. Okay. Nothing.
I, 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 I. Nothing.
Okay.
So, the next thing on our agenda is our addition to the City Managers' Report, and we wanted to talk a little bit about the City Managers' Evaluation that we had the opportunity to step through this evening. And based on the outcome of that, I would like to, first of all, does anybody have anything that they would like to add in open session?
Okay, all right. I think that we've had a tremendous year, and I think that there's a lot of really wonderful things coming down the pike for the city, Marcus Pacha and his awesome staff. So, what I would like to do is to make a motion to provide an increase to Marcus's base salary of 1.5%, but in doing so, the motion is to direct our attorney to review the employment agreement, and if necessary, make any updates and bring forward another amendment of that in order to make this happen.
Any other discussion?
No, I would, I guess I would just like to add that he's not had an adjustment in that area since 2012. So, obviously, it's certainly time for us to look at that, so.
Yes, and at that time, the adjustment was minimal.
It was minimal, and it was a one-time. It wasn't.
An adjustment. It was a one-time bonus kind of thing.
Yeah. So. Okay, with that, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman, Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for your continued support, by the way. Moving forward, under introduction of ordinances and resolutions, the first item is an introduction of an ordinance that would amend Section 22-96 of the Cadillac Code regarding panhandling and setting a public hearing for March 21st, 2016 accordingly. As the Council of Communication speaks to, there's been some recent changes to Michigan law regarding disorderly persons and that statute. What we would like to do is amend our code accordingly that provide essentially more local authority to be able to control and manage where folks can essentially conduct panhandling-type activities and where they cannot. One example might be putting a restriction in place during special events, so. But to get that process started, we do need to set the public hearing, and at that time, certainly, we will provide some additional information as presented by our Chief of Police.
So, this is being originated by stronger handling of it at a state level? That's what's causing us to look at it, or we've been having?
There were changes with the state statute.
Yes.
That will now require us to look at how we control it locally. Otherwise, there may be some question as to whether the code that we currently have on the books is enforceable.
Is enforceable. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
I have another question. At this time, I don't know if, with the redesigning of this or development of this or whatever, does busking fall under this, or is this just panhandling, going up and asking someone for money, or doing windshields, or something like that?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll see if maybe the City Attorney or Chief does. If not, we'll have to bring that back to you when we have the public hearing.
So, it'd be something you might want to look at.
Was it clear as to what you?
Busking is opening your guitar case, entertaining on the street.
No, specifically toxin there, that's not prohibited.
That's not what?
That it would not be prohibited from the state.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That activity would be allowable.
Good, thanks. That was my question.
There you go.
There. I have a summer job.
Okay. Oh, boy.
So, at this point, we just need to make a motion for the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance amending Section 22-96 of the Cadillac City Code regarding panhandling and set for a public meeting for March 21st, 2016.
All supported.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman, Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is also a request to set a public hearing. This one would be with respect to amending Chapter 42, the Hauled Waste Division of that ordinance, so that we can essentially take more waste in at our wastewater treatment plant. Currently, the ordinance, as it's written, restricts it to only waste generated from within the city, and what we would like to do is open that up so that we can receive waste from outside of the city. We have received some recent calls, the wastewater treatment plant has, from folks that would like to provide us with their leachate, and we would have to say no at this time because it's not generated within the city. So, by adjusting our code, that would allow us to do that. Jeff, is there anything that you need me to clarify on that further?
No, but it is hauled waste, so we could also accept each, if we found a benefit, actually, anything we found beneficial to the plant.
Okay.
We would accept, and obviously, anything harmful, we would decline.
Right.
Okay. Can you describe beneficial to the plant?
Well, one of the things is if there was a high-strength waste that came in that had a lot of potential energy, we could take that into our digester, charge the person to get rid of it, take it into our digester and actually produce methane gas that we could capture and then reuse someplace else. So, we could actually take in waste that would help us generate more power or more potential power, and maybe if we took in enough power, we'd say, let's put a generator at the plant, and then you wouldn't have to, we would have no electric bill because we'd be producing our own generator, our own power. So, that's what we're looking at, is the beneficial uses like that.
And what would determine something that's not beneficial? What kinds of things?
I mean.
If it, just if it doesn't do that, if it's just, okay.
Exactly. Comes in and it's really, has a toxicity to it that we might not want in our plant, so.
Okay, good. I knew that, I just wanted that said. I already knew, I already, you know, you're the gatekeeper. You're, with all this water stuff going on in places, I'm just really glad to have you at that gate, let me just say.
Well, having been on the recent tour here, the two new councilpersons, I for one will say I was way impressed by everything he had to show us and tell. The wellfield thing is awesome. Really, why? I mean, that flint thing, as you said, is in everybody's mind, and if you would have gotten the tour we got, you'd feel good about us.
Yes.
So, there you go. The gatekeeper did a good job.
I remember when I did that tour, it was like, it just left me wanting to understand more, and that's why I asked you that question, so.
Jeff, didn't we, if this states that we could not accept anything from outside the city, we did accept leachate from the county landfill at one time. Did we have to discontinue that because of this?
Well, the ord, it, yes and no. The ordinance says wherever we took our waste, we need to accept the leachate from there.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, since we're not taking it there, but we did for 30 years, do we stop taking it there? It's kind of ambiguous in the, how you read the, if we should have or not, and this will definitely clear that question up, so.
Okay.
Okay, would someone like to make the motion?
I'll do the, make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending Chapter 42, Article 4, Division 9, entitled Hauled Waste, and set a public hearing for March 21st, 2016. And I read it all correctly.
Support.
Good job.
Along with the well, with the good reading of it. I support that.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman, Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mayor, members of the City Council, this item we added in the beginning of our meeting. This is with respect to the adoption of a resolution permitting the city to discharge a mortgage, and I'm going to turn this one over to the City Attorney.
So, we were contacted with respect to the Mitchell Corp. property at 514 Wright Street, and the reason why we were contacted is because there had previously been some administrative order by MDEQ to require cleanup at that property, and so, in the process of doing that, Mitchell Corp. actually issued a mortgage to secure the cleanup to the city on property in, I believe, Owasso. So, notwithstanding that, we talked to, yeah, it's 108 North Shipman Street, Owasso. And so, the reason why we were contacted regarding that mortgage was because they are trying to sell that property in Owasso, they want the city to discharge its mortgage. So, we have looked into the matter. The only issue we're waiting on is for the MDEQ to also signify that we are okay to discharge the mortgage. As far as we can tell, we have no, we no longer have any interest in the 108 Shipman Street property in Owasso. We're trying to get the MDEQ to verify that as well. This resolution will simply discharge that mortgage from that Owasso property and clear title, so that the city's not involved in some litigation, two quiet titles to that property because of the mortgage.
And there's no value, correct, Mike?
We can't, we haven't been able to determine any value in that. One, it's likely not enforceable. Two, there's no value attached to it as far as we can tell. So, that's why we're just waiting for MDEQ to sign off on it, because it was a result of their administrative order that caused it in the first place back in 1999.
That's it?
Motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Anybody else? I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution permitting the city... I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution permitting the city to discharge a mortgage with Mitchell Corporation.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman, Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Also in our packets this evening, we had the minutes of boards and commissions. We had the minutes of the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission meeting, and that was held on November ninth. Minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on December twenty-eighth, and minutes of the Dog Park Advisory Committee meeting held on January thirteenth. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And if you come forward, if you would please say your name, and then write down your name and your address. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to good of the order. If anyone has anything that they would like to share?
I'd just like to say to the City Manager, thank you for the presentation tonight. A lot of great information in there. I know, and thank you to the staff again for all the time you put in to bring all that information together. And it's exciting, it's an exciting time here, because we have a lot of great projects coming into view here. And it's going to be great when we get them all accomplished.
Thank you.
I'll second what Matt says, and just let you know, I'm really excited about what we're doing here. And I want to keep on doing it.
I have one thing. On Tuesday, February ninth, Lincoln School Neighborhood Cadillac Community Partnership Group met, and it was finally the first one I was able to go to because of scheduling. So, I was glad to be there. Really amazing, dedicated, community-minded people there that are, their goal is to help each other out. And some of the things, they've got some really good ideas in the works. They want to thank the city for the dumpster that was put there, said that was a huge success. And we're hoping to have that repeated in the spring perhaps. And they even were talking about organizing a cleanup day around a dumpster that, where the whole neighborhood works together, and then maybe end with a block party or something like that to make it an event. But these are, I love this kind of activism of, you know, trying to make your home place, your neighborhood better and take care of your neighbors. The next meeting is March, it's the second Tuesday.
I think it's the eighth.
March eighth. It's the second Tuesday in the month, and it's at Lincoln School at seven, March eighth at seven. And.
Election Day. That's okay for me.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
Not okay for her.
That's okay for me. She, well, she doesn't have to go. But we'd really love if Chief Golnick or if Officer Rourke would come again. They had very high praise for Officer Rourke and his ideas and ability to communicate and stuff. So, it'd be great if one of you guys could come.
Yeah, that's, Officer Rourke's, part of his community services activity. He's a regular.
He's a regular.
Oh, yeah.
So, good. And there's a meeting of the Cadillac Youth Council on Wednesday at four PM, right here, with our newest member, Ginny Donnelly.
Cool.
Great. Good stuff.
Anything else?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we need to move to go to closed session?
Move to go to closed session. I will, if you like, go through the.
Sure.
Reasons. Mayor, members of the City Council, at this time, would be appropriate to consider a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the case of City of Cadillac v. Mitchell Lake Corp., Wexford County Circuit Court Case Number fourteen dash two five six zero two. Also, to discuss written confidential legal opinions and discuss the acquisition of real property, I'd also like to invite our Public Works Director and Engineer, Bruce DeWitt, along with our Director of Utilities, Jeff DeLan, to a portion of the meeting accordingly.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Here I go again with a hard going one. To adjourn to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the case of the City of Cadillac versus Mitchell Lake Corp., Wexford County Circuit Court Case Number fourteen two five six oh two dash CH, discuss written confidential legal opinions, and discuss the acquisition of real property.
And to invite.
Oh, right, right, right. Adding those additional ones to the motion.
Well, I'll support that.
Thanks.
Well done.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman, Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith? Yes.
Mayor Felkins? Yes. Motion carries.